Okay, good morning. It is July 22nd. We have a special council time today, and it is after nine. So we'll go ahead and start as I think we have most of the councils. We at least have a quorum, but we'll begin with a roll call.
Councilor Young?
Here.
Counselor Belkot?
Here.
Counselor Mevige?
President.
Counselor Marshall?
Here.
We still don't have Karen Bowerman onboard.
Not yet.
Okay.
Can keep looking.
All right, we'll begin with a public comment on agenda items only. Anyone in the room? How about online?
You do have some hands up. Caller, please unmute yourself on your end and go ahead with your comments.
This is Kimberly Gohean Albin, life patriot of Clark County, Washington, USA. So frankly, on your site here, it says the Charter amends amendments for and against statements. So there's nothing to tap on. I'd like to read those. In fact, there's nothing to tap on under Old Business at all. So I will speak a little bit about the City of Vancouver law enforcement ballot measure and the Sheriff's Office law enforcement ballot measure. Again, it says number 4.3 is Charter amendments for and against the statements. So I don't see this as transparent, for one thing. And Vancouver, it says this is why they need this. Community growth has contributed to a 30% increase in call volume for police services. Long story short, it's a sanctuary city, and they have brought in a lot of people. That's why there's so much, I call it, population pollution, because there is, there's too many people here in Clark County, Washington, USA, for our country heritage. You folks moved to the country and make it a city. And so what would the proposition for levy pay for? It's going to have 80 full-time equivalent sworn officers in a range of ranks and assignments, and add up to 36 full-time equivalent non-sworn police positions. So here's bigger government. Now, we want our police, there are peace officers, we want our sheriffs. Those are for public safety only. I ask them that when the next pandemic comes, that they serve the people and not the government, because the government is grooming them to go against the citizens. That's what, this is what's, all this is about. So a lot of millions of dollars have gone to the police and everything. We want them back. It was not we, the people, that defunded the police, it was our government. Biden, oh, he's not around anymore. So we, we want our police, but we, they must remember, it's our hard-earned tax dollars that goes through our tyrannical government that pays you. They are not loyal to you, they're loyal to themselves. It's we, the people, that want our police officers to have food on their table to take care of their families. Again, Vancouver's going to have, expand the homeless assistance and resources, resources team, the heart team. Yeah, well, I've spoken personally with Jamie, and there's still no good toilets down there on King and 11th, just west of the courthouse. And she doesn't care. They, it's a sad situation. As far as our sheriffs, those are elected, they still are, I hope. Also, I want to suggest that we elect a county manager. It should be an elected, instead of-
Thank you. That concludes your comments. And I believe that was the last caller, correct? We have one more. Okay, let's go ahead.
Jackie Lane, please unmute yourself and go ahead with your comments.
This is Jackie Lane, and I just have been watching your last several meetings on these topics for the Vancouver and the Sheriff's Office. So I would hope that you choose to adequately fund for the impact of the Vancouver changes, as well as the sheriff's requirements and all the associated impacts from all of that. I also hope that you look to using the property tax. I think the sales tax, aside from being regressive, requires you to ask for more money than you actually need, because you have to share it with the cities. It also would use up that capacity, so it wouldn't be available in the future. And like I said, it's a regressive tax that impacts the poor more than the property tax would. So you guys, I know you will do your best, and have a good day. Thank you.
Sounds like that concludes public comment. So we'll go on to number three, Old Business. First up, 4.1, City of Vancouver Law Enforcement Ballot Measure.
So I believe Mark Gasoway is here. He and the finance team have been reviewing this information, but Mark has taken the lead on gathering all the data. So I did send data to the council, I believe, last night. And if you'd like, Mark can go through the costing for this, if you would like, at this time.
Good morning, council. Mark Gasoway, Clark County Finance Director. This is an analysis that was put together over the last week to try and summarize some information on the, for the council, so that you can hopefully make some informed decisions. This particular slide that is up in front of you right now is a summary of the data components that are behind this. And so let me just walk through this, and we can go to any of those tabs that I've referenced, if you'd like more detail. So the first section talks about the impact of the different propositions on regional services. And regional services are described as all those downstream services that are impacted by additional officers. And an example of that would be the courts, district court, Superior Court, prosecuting attorney, indigent defense, all of the downstream impacts of adding officers. So the first line, line five, is an estimate of just the impact of the city proposition of adding Vancouver Police Department. The next line would be that same assumption with adding CCSO officers, 20 sworn CCSO officers. And then the next line would be the 40 officer option. So that is just the downstream impact. The next group of costs would be the downstream impact of adding services and the cost of adding CCSO, again, using the two different assumptions, 20 deputies, 8 civilians, or 40 deputies and 16 civilians. So that's the combined cost. And then just below that is the cost of the CCSO additions by themselves. Down below those cost assumptions, I've tried to summarize the revenue, potential revenue assumptions. The next section, where it says public safety sax, public safety sales tax, is the revenue that would be generated by a 1/10th sales tax, or 2 1/10ths sales tax, or 2/10ths. And those are in millions. So it's 7.8 million and 15.6 million. The next tab is a summary of what a levy lid lift would possibly yield. If you go back to the summary real quick, then we'll jump to that page. Sorry. There's a range that the council could determine. From a 1 cent levy lid lift, which is the minimum, would generate about a million dollars, just over a million dollars. And then the maximum that the, that the council could request, and again, these are voted proposals, would be 28.35. And the next line shows the impact, the annual impact on a median home price of 528,000. So it would be $5 a year, up to $142 a year. So those are summary items. We can go into all the detail you would like, but I think I'll send it back to council to see what questions, or if you don't have any questions, you know. Dang it. Sorry about that.
So first of all, I want to thank you. I know you've been scrambling to do your very best to come up with these forecasts and the impacts in the short amount of time that we've been dealing with the issue. So thank you for that, and I know they're, they may be deadly accurate, they may be pretty rough.
I guarantee you, Chair, that whatever we come up with, this will not be right. I'm just saying that no matter how well you forecast, when you get to the actuals, it's going to be different in some aspects.
So let's immediately go to questions, so that we can then go to comments. But related to what we were just talking about, obviously, a much better process, and I know that it was proposed by our manager, would have been collaboration from the very start with all the stakeholders that are impacted. And that's the jail, that's Superior Court, that's district court, it's the clerk's office, it's the sheriff's office, the PA's office, it's our indigent defense office. All of these will be dramatically impacted, as best you can estimate. And certainly, a more deliberate pragmatic process would have been to bring all those stakeholders onboard as early as possible to get the best numbers as possible to present to the public. So I know we've been doing that in earnest in the last couple of weeks, and so we've made some progress. So thank you for your efforts. Let's go to questions of council. Sue, do you have questions?
I may, but I don't want to start out. I'm still thinking.
Okay. You keep thinking. Glenn, do you have questions?
Yes, actually, I, you know, in talking to people on the community, I have had a lot of questions centered around the second and the third tabs, that information. Is there a way, Mark, that you could go over those two tabs real quickly?
I think, here they come. Yeah. So is this the tab that you're referring to, the summary of costs?
Right, that one, and then also the city's contribution.
Oh, let's go to the first tab, sorry. Okay, so this is the one I think you're referring to, where it talks about the revenue that's generated from the cities and the expense to the county for providing those services?
Yes.
Is that where you want to start, Counselor Young?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay. So what this, this analysis steps through is the amount of contribution that the cities are providing, either through inter-local agreements, primarily with the jail, district court, and corrections. Also, the county receives property taxes from those citizens that are within the city limits. And that is shown in column E. And then we also receive a sales tax, a portion of the sales tax that are generated within the city. And so that is in column F. So if you sum all of those revenue streams that the cities are providing, you get column G, which is almost $60 million a year, 59.8 million. The cost of providing those services, based on the populations of each of the cities, would be about 64.4 million. So you can see that even now, with those revenue streams that are coming in, the cost proportionately per population, we are, we are 4,568,000 to the worse. So we're already receiving less revenue than the cost to provide those services.
One question with this one, if I may. So in column E, so there is an amount that the cities have, that their, of their property tax that come into the County General Fund. What is that supposed to be used for? Because I think in this display, we're showing that it essentially would all be for law and justice, but is that the, the purpose of those funds? Because we also provide a lot of other services, you know, and, and my thought is, are some of those extra services outside of law and justice supposed to be taking contribution from those, from that revenue source?
So that, excuse me. So the property taxes received in the general fund are used for general government purposes. General government is everything from law and justice to administration. This analysis includes those administrative costs as well. So if you, if you look at the left-hand side, you'll see all the departments that are administrative-type departments, including the assessor, GIS, auditor, treasurer, et cetera. Below that is the law and justice piece. So this analysis takes, analysis takes into consideration the, the full cost of both administrative and law and justice. So it's not just comparing the revenue streams to law and justice, it's comparing it to the full cost of general government that is being provided to the cities.
Okay, thank you. I think that helps clarify. And then just the next one, just real briefly, if you wouldn't mind.
So this is the, the impact to the regional law and justice. There's different components within the law and justice itself, everything from courts down to corrections. And so what this does, could you just go one more? Thank you. So what this tries to do is show a range. In other words, we don't know the exact impact of the VPD proposition or the Sheriff's Office. We just don't know exactly, and it would, and it wouldn't be appropriate to try and define a specific number. So this analysis tries to define it within a range. So the impact of the addition of VPD officers, the direct cost, would be about $9 million to $13.4 million. There's also an indirect cost associated with the support of all of those groups. So you can't have a clerk's office or Superior Court office, or, I'm sorry, Superior Court or District Court without the support, internal support services, for example, IT, HR facilities. So that's what the indirect cost portion is. The total cost is the, is the sum of the direct cost and an indirect cost. And I apologize, that red line is so dark on this screen, but what I wanted to highlight was that the CCSO, whether it's 20 or 40, it also has a range, a direct cost component, and then an indirect cost component to support those. I think it would be, it would not be prudent for the county to approve additional support for the, for the law and justice side, without also providing some aspect of indirect support for the other groups that have to support it. I mean, we, we have to have the IT, we have to have the HR, we have to have all of those support components as well. So then, again, I'm just trying to summarize what those indirect costs, indirect costs would be together with the different combinations, whether it's VPD alone, the CCSO 20, or the CCSO 40. So it's, it's, these are summarized numbers, there's more detail even behind this, but I wanted the council to try and get a perspective of what those ranges need to look like.
Great, thank you.
Does that conclude your questions, Glenn?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Michelle or Karen, questions?
I have a question, Chair. Mark, I was looking at the breakdown of the analysis data, and thank you for gathering this as quickly as you can. I know this is just, it's been a lot very quickly. The first tab, where you have the breakdown showing the levy lift, I believe it's the first tab. It seems, yes, that's it, right there. It seems to me, kind of the way that I'm reading it, that we wouldn't have enough funds for the long term to cover all the positions. Am I correct in that, or incorrect?
Well, it depends on what, what options you select. If you look at up above, if you select just to support law and justice, we certainly can, we can fall within that range. If you determine that you're going to support the CCSO 20, we also have enough funding to fall within that range. It's when we get to the top range of the 40 deputies and the impact of VPD that we're, we're just slightly above what the range, and again, keep in mind, these are ranges. So we're not looking at an exact number. We could very well be a little bit less, a little bit higher. So the one factor that it would not cover is if we added the 40 officer option and all of the support necessary. We could not do that with the existing levy capacity that we have.
I think that's your question, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah, thank you, Mark. I appreciate that.
And Michelle, does that conclude your questions?
Yes, Chair, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen, questions?
None at this time, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let me go back to Council Marshall.
Thank you for the time to think about this a little bit, and those other questions by the councilors helped. I'm interested in the, the city's contribution in that 4.5 million thereabouts. That's not really included in a decision that we're making today, as far as I could see, or in any of the numbers to cover any of the expenses. So I'm wondering what the timing might be if we were to, is it individual ILAs that are negotiated? When, if we wanted to correct that so that we're recouping all of the costs, how, how would we go about doing that?
Yes, we can do separate ILAs. There's already a couple, and I believe on the costing, we've already accounted for that on the, on the tab that's labeled one city's contribution. So that's, if you can scroll up just a little bit, I believe. Yes, so that is, that actually already covers the ILAs there in the first box that you can see for the jail, district court, and corrections. And then just the, the rest of it is actually, or for county-wide services, as Mark has said. But yes, we would have to go back to the cities and negotiate different ILAs. Or it could be part of also a future discussion of putting out to voters as well to cover county-wide services for additional taxes and revenues at that time. And I would say, at a minimum, we will be having discussions on the jail and those who are housed in the jail, because the county doesn't get any money for felonies, and that's more than 90% of those who are housed in our jail.
Thank you. And in our one-on-ones, there was some discussion about timing of when this could be on the ballot, and whether or not, if we did this later, when the, the funding for the jail, we would, it would be known and how we were going to fund that, could be included in a package that could come perhaps in February. Is that something that is on the table today?
Yes, so council has the authority to make the decision today or Wednesday, if we need to have it, to move forward with all or parts of what is before you. So the impacts from City of Vancouver, the impacts from adding sheriff's personnel, and the impacts of the sheriffs to the law and justice system as well. So you can do all of them today. They would be, I believe, three separate ballot measures. We are looking at potentially February for, depending on council's direction, and September for the jail. So if council chose not to move forward with one, two, or all three of these, it could be moved to a different date, a vote date, and February is the earliest. And yes, you can kind of, you know, they have to be separate ballot titles, but we can certainly reference the others to show how it is a, a package to support.
Okay, so the strategy of this is, is, is something to consider, and I don't know what informs that, except our, our best guess.
So I want to just kind of add to some of your questions, because, you know, the ongoing discussion for, for years, you know, the city mentioned, and I think the city rejected actually taking a step back and doing a more deliberate and pragmatic approach with all the stakeholders. But, you know, we, we have agreements in place in some areas, and not all of them are equitable. From, from booking fees, which are kind of complicated amongst all the participants, corrections cost, we've come a long way, and I really appreciate what the city is, the City of Vancouver has done with community court, transport of prisoners, service of outstanding arrest warrants. There are a lot of areas that we've had issues with over the years that are still in progress as far as getting a really equitable approach to cost, appropriate cost-sharing measures for all the people that use the services. So that's an ongoing process, it's an ongoing challenge, we're not quite there yet. You know, community court's probably the biggest success right now between the county and the cities, as far as cost sharing and expanding that program, which is having a pretty dramatic impact, positive impact on the community. The rule of law has a lot of instrumentality to it, from defense to the PA, and the PA has been asking for years, too, to get more appropriate staffing. The spirit court and the district court, we've only really incrementally answered some of their requests over the years. The Sheriff's Office, I think, has been that proverbial can. We really have not, in any great measure, brought them up to where they should be. And at the same time, the public is always clamoring for more traffic enforcement, loud mufflers for speeding. They love the stings for theft, auto theft, commercial shoplifting, organized shoplifting. I mean, the public wants more public safety, and the rule of law, instrumentality that supports that are where we need to invest. So I don't think we can game this out, we can't wait, we can't say, well, what's best for Vancouver to have their measures succeed? What's best for the county to have our measures succeed? We generally know what all the needed areas are. We just can't wait to react. We're already behind, especially with the Sheriff's Office. And I, for one, have been pretty frustrated, just sitting a year, a year, a year without the requests that come in, and the Sheriff's Office has just fallen farther and farther behind with the population increases in the county. So now's the time to be transparent with the public. If you put, if you just let Vancouver put their measures on the ballot, the public is only going to see a portion of the cost. They won't see all the impact on all those instrumentality that we're talking about today, and that Mark tried to best estimate, the direct and indirect impacts from a rapid and large expansion of VPDs. I'm going to call them line officers. I mean, the support staff is obviously needed to allow the line officers to do their job. But the public has a right to know. And if they're going to be asked to pay- And if they're going to be asked to pay the bill, they need to know, have a better appreciation for what the total bill is on the PA, on the defence, on the courts, both district and Superior Court. It's just a matter of transparency. It's a matter of, okay, you're asking for more public safety. We want to give it. We are behind. Here are the impacts. Here's what we propose to do. It is our best estimate with the time that we've had and the collaboration that we have had with the stakeholders that we have to fund in our budget. So I really don't have any other questions other than what does the council want to do? Where is your political will? You know, we've had some previous discussion on the levy lift. And I will tell you where I sit now, looking at the number that the Finesse team has given us. I'm looking at the largest levy lift we can come up with because it'll be our best estimate to cover most of these costs, including increasing at least the minimal, what I consider right from the very start, the minimal addition of 20 deputies and the eight civilians. So I'm looking at the 28.35 levy lift. I do believe that as far as regressive taxes, there's a strong argument that, you know, sales taxes hit the bill. They impact people that we really shouldn't impact as, you know, as best we can. So I'm looking at, and we only had support on a public safety sales tax increase of 1%, which doesn't come close to fulfilling the ask for additional revenue to support the impacts, including a sheriff's department increase. So I'm proposing that we do go for the largest levy lift and see if the public supports it so we can lay out the best we can of why we're asking for that. And I fully support at this time at least taking a good step in the right direction for our own sheriff's department to get staffing up to where it should be, where the public will be more satisfied and more secure. So with that, what are your comments? Which direction do you want to head in?
Chair.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead, Glenn.
Thank you. This is obviously not an easy decision. And yes, I wish there could have been some better coordination between the city and the county. But we are at where we're at now, and we have to go based on that information. We know that the Vancouver levy is going to be placed on the ballot. And the question is whether we place items on the ballot at the same time this particular election. I am fully supportive of getting the Sheriff's Office more up to par. I do think we need to take little steps. I think that 40 officers or 40 deputies probably would be good. I do agree, we need to be able to shift from our law enforcement personnel being reactionary to crime that has or is taking place to more preventative. And the only way you can do that is with more bodies out in the public. With that being said, if there are still two other councillors that are supportive of placing things on the ballot today, I will lend my support to that. But I do think that probably the more prudent thing at this point and smarter strategic-wise would be to let the Vancouver ballot measure go this time. And we'll see whether it's approved or not. I think it will be. And to come back in February with a full vetted package that we have spent considerable time, that we've worked with all of the different partners that we need to work with, all of the different electeds, all of the different departments, and a good public safety package that would include the jail, CCSO, the impacts from VPD, all of it together. I think that'll be something that'll be more, it'll be easier to make that argument to the voter in February than it is now. And I'm also concerned that if we put stuff on the ballot now, that one or the other might fail, or both might fail. So with that being said, again, if there are still two councillors that would like to put it on the ballot this election, I will lend my support. But I would suggest that we wait until February and come forward with the full package that does, and I'm adamant on this, it does include at least 20 new sheriff's deputies. That is something that I think all of us that had an election two years ago or a year and a half ago, that was an issue that I know that I campaigned on, was to increase law enforcement presence in our community, help reducing crime. And so I'm definitely supportive of that, whether that be today or in February. Those are my comments at this time.
So I just, I want to clarify your position, what you kind of just restated in a shorter fashion. So you do support putting it on the ballot if other councillors do? You would prefer to wait until February?
That is correct.
Okay, other comments? Council Marshall?
Just to add on.
I'm sorry, was that Michelle?
Yes, it was.
Go ahead.
I am interested in pausing this till February as well for the same reasons that Councillor Young pointed out with issues, or with these things just not getting passed on the ballot, being all together. My stance is still with funding these positions with safety sales tax and making more of a long-term program to add, a long-term plan to add these positions. I think this would align with the current empty FTEs that the sheriff already has and staffing up and staffing those and beefing those up. And then gradually putting in other sheriff positions as well. So I support, absolutely support, giving the Sheriff's Office additional FTEs, just using a different way. And I also think that we should delay putting this on the ballot as well. So that's my stance and opinion.
Okay. It would be great if we had a crystal ball to know how things could play out. But, you know, one of the things, you know, I campaigned really on all county services because I think we were suffering. And an argument for waiting is that we could see this in the context of the full budget. You know, I support additional staffing. I support a lid lift. You know, I guess I'm kind of on the fence, but leaning toward doing a full package that includes the jail and analyzing this within the context of the full budget that we get to go through.
Councillor Bowerman?
I have just a follow-up question. As I think over what you had said, Chairman Vijay, you mentioned that you would like to be sure that the voters can see the total budgetary impact at one time. And therefore, I think you were hoping to see what we propose now on the ballot now. So my question is this. We're talking about in the future with the initiatives proposal that will be on the ballot, making budgetary impact known. Would it be possible on this ballot to let the budgetary impact be known right along with the city's proposal for their initiative? So that the county's additional expenses would, could be known at this time? Or is the only way to let it be known to put the whole enchilada on the ballot? Do you see what I'm asking?
Are you volunteering to be on the for or against ballot committee for the city's measure? I'm not quite clear on what you're actually proposing.
I'm talking about how we are proposing in this initiatives, initiative, the initiative for initiatives, that there be a budget statement that would come forward along with the initiative. I'm asking if that could be done on this ballot, this November's ballot, so that the city, the impact of the city's initiative could be known through that budget information that would be provided? Or do we have to go to the, as I called it, the whole enchilada to have the full county proposal on the ballot in order for that to be known?
Councillor Bowerman, just for clarification, are you suggesting that the ballot measure the city is putting on to include the costing on that ballot measure?
Yes.
Or is it, okay. I'm going to look at legal because I don't think that we have the ability to tell the city what to put on the ballot until if that initiative gets passed, that would allow that.
Yeah. It's in the initiatives now that the council, that the voters would vote on. But I, and I know that it's not passed at this point. So does that mean that the city provides no budget information? I guess it does, huh?
Councillor Bowerman, this is Leslie Lopez. I mean, it would be up to the city to decide what to put, what information they want to put in their own initiative.
Yes, it wouldn't be in their initiative. It would be in that budget add-on that we have proposed now. So anyway, maybe the answer is no. In which case, I guess I would also be in the group that says, let's pause until February so that the total impact is known. And I really don't want to be in that place because I think that the public has a right to know what the total budgetary impact of the city's initiative is. And that, I guess, won't happen.
Well, so I wasn't flippantly suggesting of volunteering for the for or against on their ballot request. But letters to the editor, we've done a little bit of that in these hearings. These have been public hearings, although I haven't seen any of it reported by any paper online or locally. So we've at least taken a stab of being transparent with the public from our point of view. So I think Councillor Marshall wanted to say something. I'm just going to say I am very disappointed. We just don't seem to see, to have the political will here to do for our Sheriff's Office what we need to do and for our PA and courts and defence and jail. So this will roll out. We'll see what passes for the City of Vancouver. And then it'll roll out over a number of years. Then we'll see the impacts, and then we'll be about three or four years behind. And then you're still going to be having, whoever sits up here will be having the same conversation, well, what will the public vote on? I mean, we have no scientific polling. We're just guessing as amateurs as to what will pass and what will fail. My bottom line, and I had had this conversation with Glenn Young this morning on the phone, the public needs to have this information. They need to know what the total bill is. That was my, other than equity for our sheriff and getting them moving in the right direction to being better staffed, I wanted the public to have full transparency on what the actual impacts will be from Vancouver. If we do nothing, they will not know. And then we'll be playing catch-up from the county manager trying to put budgets together. Each of the electeds trying to say, hey, we need more judges. We need more clerks. We need more jail beds. We need more detox and medical care and mental health treatment in the jail. We're just going to be years behind. So I am disappointed that I don't see unanimity in moving forward. But Councillor Marshall, you wanted to add something?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up. I think, Councillor Bowerman, that was a good thought to try to figure out how to communicate that. I do think, though, that it is the only avenue we would have if one of us were selected is the pro and con statement for Vancouver's measure. And I think, though, that collectively, we could think about a letter to the editor or an opinion piece or some way to better communicate to the public and anticipating additional needs related to the jail so that we start building that community awareness to prepare for when we do go to the ballot.
Chair, if I can add one thing to Councillor Bowerman's statement, is in the Vancouver's statement, it says that there's money allocated to jail corrections and the downhill services. And I think Mark's spreadsheet shows that we're already not getting funding for those. So I think that, to Chair's point, it's not listing all the services out there for transparency. And so I think that any way we could get that out is appropriate because it's a little misleading, I think, to the boogers.
Oh, go ahead. If we don't go forward with this now and delay it by three months, not by years and years, but by the three months, might it be possible for the council as a whole to put together a good letter to the editor and send it to all of our newspapers and put it online with an explanation of the data that we have seen this morning? Because that is really formative. And if all of us were behind that, I think it would be informative to the voters.
Councillor Bowerman, this is Leslie Lopez. Actually, I was just going to talk about that, so thank you for bringing that up. I do need to look at the legality of that because typically, a council cannot, as a whole, take a position regarding a particular measure. So I would like to take a look at that to see what the options are just to make sure we're following, you know, what council can or can't do as a whole. So I'd like to take a look at that before that decision's made. I can come back to council on Wednesday.
Thank you. And I wasn't suggesting that we be pro or con, but that we talk about if it is passed, here are the implications for what the county would do. And there's a little bit of difference there between the two. So just for information.
Thank you. I'll take a look at that just to make sure that I do understand the distinction. Thank you for clarifying that.
So I'm seeing no way forward from what I'm hearing, despite all the animated previous discussion on whether it should be a public safety sales tax increase and what amount, or a levy lift and what amount? I'm sensing that the council, that there aren't three votes to move forward on anything at this point. Is that correct?
I think not at this time.
Okay, so let's do a thumbs up for this. All those councillors that want to just take a knee and wait and maybe address in February? There's certainly no guarantee that the city will play with us between now and then since we've had little luck in trying to work with them now. But if that, all the other councillors' position, just show me a thumbs up. You want to wait. You don't want to put anything on this ballot.
I guess I wouldn't couch it exactly like that. But that we would use this time to consult with law and justice, look at this in the context of our annual budget, and develop a package that includes the jail that could go forward in February.
I concur with Councillor Marshall.
Okay, so being recouched in a more friendly way. Looks like we... Okay, so being recouched in a more friendly way, looks like we, Glenn, where's your thumb, up or down? Okay. So I guess I'm the only knee vote because I want to act now. I want the public to have more transparency now. And so I think we're done with that old business. Thanks, Mark, for putting your best effort forward and showing the impacts. And hopefully, some newspaper will actually pick up on the whole story. All right, 4.2, I think we've about covered that, but I just want to confirm that was separate issue for, is there any life on that? Public safety sales tax increase just to support the sheriff's request for additional positions and support staff? Is there, do you want to pause or do you want to move forward?
My sense is that that would be best to roll into the full package that could go forward in February.
Okay, not a whole lot of anything. So disappointed once again. Going on to 4.3, charter amendments, for and against statements. I did try to print out your latest spreadsheet. I think you picked it up.
Oh, sorry.
Rebecca, if you could pull it.
Right, but anyway, you know, there was somewhat of an, I wouldn't say outcry, but a lot of people were, oh, I didn't know about it, I didn't hear about it, I wanted to be involved. So anyway.
Yeah, that's unfortunate. We did have this as a press release within all the publications throughout the county. But I did add those who reached out after the fact, after me last week, and those are at the bottom there. And all four of them were for the sheriff's office salary. So that included Jim, I don't, I'm not going to try his last name, Ann Donnelly, Michelle Rudy and Gary Lucas. And so just, this is council's decision, and I mentioned last week that I would just plug in some for and against, just to help with your discussion today, taking on what they actually expressed in their communication. And I tried to put that in the requested line there. But certainly, council has to actually make this decision on who's going to write the for and against statements. So I'm looking for your direction if you want to change whatever on there, just.
Just to clarify, so the, those that are for or against, there's one statement that goes into the ballot, they'll form as subgroups and collectively work on this.
Yes, and only up to three people could be on a subgroup.
And it looks like. I was going to say, it looks like Gary Lucas is four in the sheriff's column. So that would make four individuals of whom we could select three. And the others, I think we could approve as is if we so desired, is the way it appears to me.
Is there a correct, councillor Bowerman? I just, yes, a maximum of three per subcommittee. I just didn't put the for next to Gary Lucas because he was last on the list, but does not mean that he didn't ask for that.
So I do support Ann Donnelly being on the list, on that team.
I think.
How do we want to go about? I'm sorry, Glenn, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I personally like how it's written out and would be completely okay with that. I think the only issue that we have is that there are four people that are for the sheriff's salary. And I am unfamiliar with Jim Sinescu. I assume that's how you pronounce the name. And I don't know if the other councillors are familiar with that individual, but I think that as far as I would say, Ann Donnelly, Michelle Rudy and Gary Lucas, I think, would be fantastic on the committee.
Why don't we do it this way? Glenn, why don't you restate that as a motion?
Sure, yeah, so I moved.
For that particular committee.
Yep. I moved that we move forward as indicated on this chart, with the exception that we assign Ann Donnelly, Michelle Rudy and Gary Lucas to the for for the sheriff's salary.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Just a question on Margaret Tweet. Against statements for all three is what her request shows. And do you want to, or was the intention to put her under the initiative against as well?
I think that would be okay. I would offer that as a friendly amendment. Accept it.
Further discussion?
Does council want to hear any of the background on Jim, the individual that councillor Young just mentioned didn't have any background, because he did put a little background? He just, he was a 12-year deputy prosecuting attorney for Clark County and now in his 28th year practicing law. And he's continually worked closely with law enforcement, specifically the sheriff's office. Just wanted to share that.
Kathleen, I have a comment about Jim. I was familiar with his background and I was thinking that he would be a good person, a good addition to have on that.
So we may end up having another motion in round, but if there's no further discussion on Glenn's motion with the friendly amendment, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
No.
Okay, so I called, let me just make sure, all those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any oppose?
No.
Okay, so the motion does not carry. Further motions?
I would move what was recommended here, including Margaret Tweet, to be included in the against for the initiative and to include Jim Sinescu as, Jim Sinescu and Donnelly and Gary Lucas for the statement for the sheriff.
I'll second that. Further discussion? Okay, no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. So I think that concludes the business on that. And it actually concludes what I have on the agenda for this morning. All right, with that, we'll stand adjourned.